Leilani, thank you so much for meeting me today. I appreciate you, what you're doing for the city, what you've already done for the city.
Thank you.
For those of you who don't know, Leilani has run a business for over 20 years, which is especially a mark of accomplishment in a city like New Orleans. She's also run for office once before in New Orleans. She's running for office again for District D. She's someone who I've always respected, the way that you look at the world, the way that you look at our city. And I'm so glad that you decided to sit down with me to talk about our city today.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So please tell everybody, give a brief introduction about yourself and what is driving you to run for office?
Um, well, I'm Leilani Hina. I was born and raised here in New Orleans. I'm a seasoned business owner. Like you said, I started my first business actually when I was seven. It was not a lemonade stand. I have created hundreds of jobs. I've improved the quality of life for thousands of New Orleanians. I put myself through school. I have an undergrad in marketing management, finance and statistics.
Statistics is difficult.
Yes.
It's very important.
Yes. And I have a master's in business. After I paid my way through college, I scaled my business from my garage to seven locations. And that's a little bit about me.
I think that's a huge accomplishment and probably more than most candidates and politicians who are actually still in office can say about themselves. So what is, let's talk about District D a little bit. You've got, I think you have the Greek church, is that true?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You've got the most of the lakefront in New Orleans.
Yeah.
You've got UNO, you've got Dillard.
Yes.
And do you have St. John or is that?
A little tiny, so we're 70124, 70122, a little bit of 70119, that would be by St. John, 70117, a little bit of 70116, I think three houses in 70115, and then people forget 70126.
Okay.
So Diamond over there by the Lakefront Airport.
And so what are your big issues for District D? What, what do you want to do with District D once you become a city councilwoman?
To be perfectly honest, my issues cross District D because my issues are basically streets. It's city services. And you can't stop in District D when you hit District C or A, you know, or B or whatever. So streets are important to me. Trash pickup, light, basically the basics, getting the basics done right. That's important to me. That's the first thing I want to tackle.
I think that's so important. I think if you ask anybody on the street, that's their number one concern.
Yeah.
But I rarely see that reflected in the people who are elected to office and who remain in office. There's one statistic in particular that I like to focus on just because it's very basic, bare bones, and it's one of the ones that the city gives you the most access. It's how many drains they're cleaning. And you know, you look, Mitch Landrieu, Ray Nagin, Latoya Cantrell, it doesn't matter who's in charge, it doesn't matter who's on the city council, they're supposed to have a very important oversight role. But every single five-year period, I think we get five years behind in cleaning the drains. We don't focus on it. Where does that money go? What happens? Do we know?
It's, it's, it's not just the money, it's also the short staff. And there's no one in there, so DPW and Sewage and Water Board, when I always say, I feel so sorry for the people who work there because we kind of dog them out, right? Because, I mean, that's the first people we're mad at. I would imagine that morale has to be on the floor. And I wouldn't want anybody to know I worked there because of the way we all talk about those locations. The, the main issue that, and the biggest thing that I bring to the table is that we don't have any systems in place. So like when I scaled my business from my garage to seven locations, I did that through accountability-based system. And since we don't have any systems in place in the city, we keep governing through patchwork. You know, it's like they get elected, people complain, they patch it. But there's no system going on. Do you want me to give you an example?
Yeah, please, absolutely.
Simple, this, this is so simple. Three, maybe, maybe a month and a half ago, three people came to me, same issue, and they said that they were having trouble with overgrown grass. Everybody has that, right? But under the overpasses, right? One guy had a mattress, needles, a couch, he literally had a couch, and all this trash underneath an overpass. He said, he called his councilperson, and his councilperson very rudely told him that he doesn't have a grass cutting service in his office, so that he needed to call 311, as if this guy in this whole neighborhood hadn't been calling 311 for the past three years. Well, I put in a ticket and I called 311, well, actually, I put the ticket in 311. I called two councilmembers at large and I leaned on the service. In 10 days, they cut the grass, removed the needles, completely cleaned. Guy's so happy, he put my sign on his roof, told the whole neighborhood that I fixed this problem. And I told them, but I didn't fix your problem. We fixed that problem.
Right.
Because the grass is going to grow back and you're going to call again and have to go through all of this. And you shouldn't have to do that because there's no systems in place. We, we have no checks and balances. We don't, you know, at a certain time when the grass gets cut, shouldn't it, isn't it common sense to, okay, two weeks go by, some kind of accountability, so you check off, so you go back and make sure, you know? And then what about the closing off process? You remove homeless people, they're going to go right back out. Like, there's no, you see what I'm saying?
Right.
You just keep doing the same thing over and over.
I love that you actually did the hard work of a city councilperson not even being elected. This is a huge problem that I have, you know? You work, I work, everybody works, right? But I'm going through my life, I'm walking my dogs in the morning. I can identify an issue. I'm lucky in District B, and I'm not going to necessarily name names here, except for the staff member, Matthew, is incredible. I will take a picture, I'll send it to him, he'll create the ticket, he'll directly email and CC the people who are in DPW or Sewage and Water Board or even Entergy to figure out who's responsible and to make sure it gets done. And I don't think that that's widespread enough. You're right, we don't have the systems. I actually think we do have systems, but I think our systems are bad and they need to be replaced with better systems. I hear a lot of complaints about the Civil Service Administration and that many times we're restricted in who we can fire and who we can hire. I, I do know we have a huge manpower issue.
Yeah.
And I know specifically, like the Sewage and Water Board, for example.
Very short staffed.
Right. We, you can, you can say that we're short-staffed, but then you also see issues like earlier in Latoya's first term, you had Sean Ferguson. He had a violent, unhinged son arrested multiple times. They got him a job at the Sewage and Water Board. He got violent at the Sewage and Water Board, had to have the cops called on him, and he still had a job there.
That's a problem.
So I wonder how much of this is going on? I, I've heard a rumor, and I think this was about the school system back in the day, which is on the charter. So I mean, that, that system has been solved, I guess. But you had an inspector general come in and he said, "Oh, we do direct deposit? Let's change that. I want to hand every person their check for the week so I can thank them for doing such a good job around here." And supposedly, like somewhere between 25% to a third of the checks were never picked up. And then he was let go or moved.
Straight up corruption.
Exactly. Said, "We need audits."
Before, before we do, before we do audits, I want to go back to something that, that you said. I don't want to, I don't want to get off the subject real quick. You said that the guy put in the ticket for you and I said I put in the ticket for you. What's sad is, that's not a councilperson's job. That's how you know we don't have systems in place. If we had system, you said that you think they do have systems. If we had system, a councilperson's job not to put in a ticket, call 311 and do that, that's not the job. If the system was in place, they would have a cue or, yeah, a cue of when to go back and do that is what I'm saying. So even if the person put the, put the ticket in or if I put the ticket in, there should be a system, and I want to be specific what I mean about systems. It's kind of like when you think about, like if I'm not here and my employees are working, I don't know what's going on, but there's systems in place that I don't have to jump back into.
The reporting, right.
Yeah, yeah. So with the 311 system even, if, if we put in one time that we have overgrown grass somewhere, one time, there should be a system to where it's at least timed that the people who went and cleaned it, they need to go back without having anybody call you, without you having, that's not the councilperson's job. I'm glad they did it. I'm glad I did it. But if we had systems in place, it would free up the councilperson to do other stuff. That's what, that's what I mean by it.
That's a good point. Thank you, thank you. So you're running for the, the, the city council position for D that's currently held by Eugene Green. I believe he is also running for reelection.
Yes.
So if you don't mind, I'm going to give you the opportunity to say whatever you want about his voting record or why you think, you know, you're going to be the, the better gal for the job.
You know, I, I don't, I don't like to talk about people's personalities.
Right.
I do have a pet peeve on this one, but let's talk about record first. When I ran for mayor in 2021, I ran against Cantrell because of so many things that were breaking down. And if I'm honest, I ran because I was hoping it would fuel someone in city council who had the budget and who had the clock to run. I wanted somebody to run because I felt like, basically, a candidate should step up, a councilperson should step up when there's a need, not when it's time or when the, when the seat's free.
Right.
The seat was not free, but I felt like the city was on fire and someone should have stood up.
You were right.
To me, a leader stands up at that time. No one did. I did, but no one else did. Who, who would say that they deserve to be mayor now? No one stood up. Well, four years later, when I start looking at things, because I don't, I don't always, I'm like you, I'm doing my job and, you know, getting things done. I see laws being passed and I'm like, ooh, that's good, that passed. Ooh, that's good, that passed. But I didn't realize when there was a measure that came up to say if we should be able to see who the mayor appoints, who handles our money for transparency. Councilmember Green voted against that. And it was, what's his name, Drew So, who brought that measure into place. And although it passed, it passed in spite of him. There was an accountability measure brought up by JP, actually, I believe. And that one might have been Helena as well. But that one was to hold accountable street contractors to fix our streets. Who votes no against that? Who? Green did. That's who, like, we finally.
Those are some questionable votes.
Those are big things.
At least they didn't pass.
No, yeah, yeah. Against us, yes. They actually passed.
Yeah, right. He didn't, he didn't.
He didn't help, in spite of him. So when I see in 2021 that I'm running against these ridiculous things and she doesn't want to show and be transparent with us, the existing mayor, then he's voting to help her keep this a secret from, this doesn't make sense. This is our taxpayer dollars. And when I saw that, I'm like, oh, hell no. This is not okay.
I, I agree with you 100%. I'm, I'm completely shocked. I'm dumbfounded.
You can look it up.
Honestly, I can't explain it because you're right. The mayor Cantrell, going into her second term, was just a failure. I mean, the hard rock was behind her at that point. Massive budget failures, scandals.
Stealing from the library.
Stealing from the library.
So, not that she stole from the library, but she did call the person who stole from the library, the true son of the city. And that really got under my skin.
Right, of course. That was, that was disgraceful. And I remember making a big deal about that. That's why, you know, I personally volunteered along with some of the Republican donors to put out the recall. And I'm upset, everybody wants to sit here and criticize the mayor today. I think that's easy. Anybody can criticize the mayor today. But I'm asking these people, where were you?
Yeah.
We literally mailed an envelope to your door.
Yeah.
All you had, it was in a postage-paid envelope. All you had to do, sign it, take your little tongue, lick the envelope, put it in there and put it back in the mail.
You saw what happened to the, the ballots when they put them in the office. They just sat there.
Yeah, but we, they, the Republican donors decided to pay Democrat organizers who were less in click with the party to do a lot of the organizing.
Gotcha.
And I feel like that was just sabotage from the beginning. You had Mickey Mouse, you had Donald Duck.
I saw that.
I could have done a better job personally. Republican donors, hello, book a meeting with me. All right. Anyway.
Plug in his own podcast.
Look, nobody, nobody is calling for the mayor to resign at this point. Nobody is calling for Susan Hudson to resign at this point.
I think a lot of people are, but not the people who can make it happen.
Amy Freeman did.
Yeah, I think a lot of people.
I was so impressed. She was the only one that I saw. If you want to name any names out there.
Honestly, I can't think of it off the top of my head, but I saw a bunch of them.
Do you think that they should resign?
The mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. JP Morell said, "Oh, you know, the federal government is putting us in a difficult situation right now because of this indictment. It's going to hurt the ability for the city to get business done." Well, why don't you call for the mayor to resign, JP? That's what she's supposed to do.
I'm not going to speak to any other candidates.
Yeah, no, look, I'm not, I'm not trying to force you to. I'm sorry, I just feel a little passionate sometimes, but that's how that goes. Anything else you want to say about your agenda before I move on to some other topics?
Um, you asked me, the last question was about Green. My, my pet peeve that I didn't tell you, the way you talk to someone is, is huge to me.
Yes.
I feel like you can get a point across, you can be angry, you can be happy. And the way you speak to people is, is, is huge. And there's too many times that I've looked on Nextdoor. I mean, so again, I'm, this isn't something, this is my opinion. You can go find it yourself.
Yes.
Too many times I've looked on Nextdoor and I'm listening to, just like he told a guy, "I don't have a grass cutting service in my, no shit, Sherlock." I mean, you know, it's like, why would you say that to someone? You know, these people, we, we were at a, at a forum. I think it was, I can't think of the name of it right now. Step Up, I think it was called. And at the forum, this woman gets up and she says she's in District, she says she, she names a problem in District E. And that wasn't where District D. The way he spoke to her about not knowing where her district was, this talking down to her, the moderator had to cut him off and explain to him that we don't talk to people. You know, it's like, and then she, the lady was desperate. So to me, if you run for office, you have to understand that people are, they've been calling for years. They're upset. So they do come at you sometimes in a rude way, which I think people need to watch that. But they do come at you like that. But if, if someone's coming at you, you don't make them feel small for not knowing what district they're in. They just know that the person that they see, they finally have a, a candidate or someone, a, a councilperson in front of them, they just want help. You know, the only answer to the question was, ma'am, I will get with your councilperson and, and see what we can do. But that didn't happen. It was this down talk to this woman. It was, it was embarrassing. It was embarrassing. And, and you know, as a, as a, when somebody's serving, it, it did not fit the, the, the position that you're serving someone. It was that embarrassing. And that, I have, I have a problem with that. I do.
I, I do understand your point. When you're a politician, your job is to be a public servant. And too many people forget that that is the mission, that is the sacred responsibility that we ask our politicians to bear. And so I, I think that's where we really go wrong sometimes, particularly like the, the New Orleans response to COVID. The politicians feel like they have a responsibility to protect people from themselves and tell other people what to do. And I think that when you put yourself into that mindset, there is such a thin line between helping people and really just ruining lives.
See, I think that's the independent in me. Because, oh, I was on another podcast the other day and the young man said, with the lady, oh, I was, I think I told that story about the lady in the wrong district. And his response was, you know, "That's a shame that you guys, or councilpeople, should have explained to her." And I said, "No, it's actually not." I mean, that, that's what we're going to agree to disagree. You are responsible for you. And, and you have to be responsible, you have to educate yourself. You have to read, you have to, you, you can't come to the table and expect somebody to do everything for you. And that's, that to me is, is another pet peeve. I've been working since I was seven years old. And I've hit the same roadblocks as everybody else. But it's not everybody else's fault, you know? And I think this new, I don't know if it's the age, I don't know what it is.
It is, it is. It's the victim mindset. I could probably have an hour-long podcast just on the cultural component.
You can't on one hand brag about being resilient and then on the other hand, it's everybody else's fault. You're, you know, you have to pick yourself up at some point. And that's one of the things I'd like to instill into, honestly, society, you know? But I want to help people, I do. But that help needs to come with accountability. That's, that's, that's my thing. I will help you all day long if you will show me that you're accountable and that you, first appreciation, give me that, you know?
Yeah, don't be mad at me while I'm trying to help you, first off. That's basic.
Right? But appreciation and accountability? Yeah, I, I think, I think that's, I think that's why people don't want to help as much anymore because of the way it's, it's like, like you owe it to them.
We just put these messages out there that people deserve things just because they're alive. And it ends up creating resentment and it shuts people down. It's not a pathway that helps people actually take control of their lives and better themselves.
It's a balance we're not hitting well.
So let me ask you about a couple of issues New Orleans-wide. Because city council, I mean, you are your district, but you also vote on a lot of things that affect the whole city. We recently had some news that President Trump was considering sending the National Guard down to New Orleans. Let me just review a couple of things first. So we are down dramatically from the peak of crime during COVID. But we also still are in the top 25 most violent cities in the United States. We're also more violent than cities like Mosul, Iraq, where the Taliban are in control, and areas of Mexico, where the Sinaloa cartel are in control. So is it possible that we can both acknowledge the progress that has been made but also accept that people deserve safety in their neighborhoods and that lives are important and worth saving? How do you look at this issue?
Now you got me all outside of District D. So I'm going to, I'm going to come at it from an economic standpoint.
All right.
Since businesses.
I love that, I love that.
Business is my, is my platform. First of all, I have relatives that are in these own forces. And I can tell you firsthand that they're not trained for police work. I will tell you that firsthand.
True.
That will open up a lawsuit that's, that could be crazy. First of all, if we're arresting people and not reading Miranda rights or not, you know, if they're not doing the, taking the proper steps that are necessary for law enforcement, there is no training there. So that's, that's, that's one red flag. Economically, I mean, I know for sure, I travel, like, I literally work to travel. And I take those experiences and I bring those back to my business. Probably why I'm still in business, because I'm constantly innovating, right? I would not go to a city or a state that had troops in it. There's no way. And I wouldn't go for a while. There's just no way. I would be more afraid. It's, it's, I understand that the perception, or the, the idea is that they're going to come here and that we're going to be safer. I understand that that's the idea. The perception from the outside is, it is less safe if they're there. Now that's tourism money. I mean, that's tax dollars that's, you know, going down the drain. So economically, because we are doing well and where karma is going down, I don't think that's a good idea. I don't.
Okay, that's fair. I just wanted to ask your opinion. I will mention, I went to Cancun for my honeymoon, it's about, about a year ago at this point. And they had National Guard that was patrolling Cancun Strip.
Braver than me.
I felt safer seeing them there. It could, it could, yeah, it could depend. It's an interesting debate, for sure.
It depends.
Let me ask you about another.
You're also a man.
I am a man.
And I'm a woman.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, it's, it's, there's a different, whether guys want to admit it or not, you guys don't understand, men, I mean, no matter, I can't understand what it feels like to be a man. You guys do not understand the level of safety that you have over us. You don't. You don't understand how you can walk down the street and you feel just fine. Where a woman walking down the street is completely different that goes along. The fear, we have fear.
Yeah, I have fear too in New Orleans.
We're in New Orleans. Make it a safe, make it a safe place.
Yeah.
Make it a safe place, walking at night by yourself. Still, a woman feels different than a guy does. You feel different about your daughters than you do your sons, whether you want to say it or not. You do. So that could, that alone could be a different factor for, you know, our, our answers.
Uh, switching topics a bit, another big issue that I find personally is that the city council, I think unanimously, just voted for city ID cards. And as JP Morell said on Noel Norman, this is so that individuals who think that they're a dog or they think that they're something else, they can go down to the city office and they can get an ID card and they can identify themselves however they want, whether they are here legally, whether they're not here legally, whether they want to identify as a human or a different type of human. They can do all of that and this is going to help them check out books from the library and do other things.
I'm going to have to do more research on that one. And that must be one that, that, I did hear about it and I saw Cantrell's face on the thing. And if I'm not, that joke, I thought it was a joke. I, I thought it was.
I thought it was a joke too.
I thought it was, you know, a meme that somebody put out. I, I'm going to refrain from that question till I'm able to look.
That's fair.
And I'm going, I really thought that one was a joke. I did.
Is JP Morell, to me, look, listen, um, I certainly appreciate, you know, anybody who wants to come to New Orleans and work, especially if they bring a different set of life experiences that can enrich our city. But I'm really not in favor of people breaking our laws, coming here and while in a state of breaking our laws, taking spots in our public schools when we have multi-generational families that have struggled in New Orleans who, who don't get to fill those spots. You have crimes that are being committed. And I think that this is, is something that's being done across the nation as a way to encourage people to migrate here, whether they're able to do so legally or not. And that's what I feel is driving it. But that, they're never going to tell you that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I can't speak to that because I, I remember I'm a stat girl and I don't have any stats on that.
Right, right, right.
I like, I like to deal with facts if, if I can. Yeah.
Uh, I think last thing that I have on my mind right now, and we talked about the Sewage and Water Board and infrastructure earlier, is the budget issues. The city is claiming that they have a huge budget problem right now. When you're in city council, how will you look to orientate yourself in, in deciding which areas can be squeezed and which areas can't?
So across the board, I, I told you, city services are important to me. I understand that there's a lot of different programs out there, but for me, I'm very focused on the ones that affect us all equally first. That would be, you know, trash pickup, that would be, uh, street repair, like, things like that, right? The, the way the, and I'm going back to systems and I'm probably never going to stop talking about this because it's important.
It's very important. Thank you for, like, we need to remember this.
It's important. We don't even have a, a dedicated street maintenance fund. And that doesn't make sense in this city.
Wow.
It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense. So what happens is, I mean, we, we basically govern the way we fix the streets. We just, somebody gets elected. Everybody complains. We pull money from someplace where we shouldn't or maybe should and put it somewhere else. It's like this constant patchwork that's going on, right? I'd like a designated street fund. First of all, highly important. I want to designate 11 to 14 million more to that designated street fund, but then you have to create income to help pay for that designated street fund. And in business, we call it a passive income, right? So we need to find self-sustaining sources of income.
Right.
So that we can use that to put into.
We have millages that are supposed to go to it, right?
So, true, but what I'd like to, well, remember, I'm, I'm saying dedicated. So if we have a dedicated street fund, we have millages that are supposed to go to, it's still not going to be enough. We have a $36 million deficit when it comes to fixing the street. That's not going to, that's, that's so.
We have, we have twice the budget of Jefferson Parish and worse services.
Right now, if, this, this is, this is the, the, the one thing I keep trying to make, hone in, right? I've been in business since I was seven years old. Okay? I should be out of business several times. When I scaled my business from my garage to seven locations, two of those locations were New Orleans, other ones were Homer, Lafayette, um, the North Shore, you know, different places. When I went to these places to open a business, it was like, I mean, there was, it was.
No delay.
No delay, nothing, right? The two here, oh my God, to open a business, first of all, the, the permex department, it, it's, it's, it's like, it's really, and again, the morale's got to be low, but this, if the red tape is ridiculous, right? Instead of ribbon cuttings, they should be cutting the red tape on the, on permits. You have small business owners that are trying, have business in the city. And if it takes you a year to get a permit, they don't have money to sit around and wait to, you know, to the, for the, but they're out of business before they're even in business. All right? So that's one thing. The other thing that, that I'm stressing is if you look at the numbers, if you look at the, the polls, I guess, I don't, I don't know how accurate they, they are, but if we follow the existing polls, you're going to have JP, King and Leslie's a definite because she's already in, right?
Right.
So if you, if you.
Unopposed.
Yeah. If you follow the polls, then you have those three. You have three, honestly, whether you like them or not, they're brilliant attorneys. You have three attorneys in office. You don't have any innovation. You don't have any, anybody that understands how to pivot. You don't have anybody that understands how to, the creativity. I'm, I'm just saying.
If I could pass a constitutional amendment that said that nobody could run, uh, uh, for office unless they first ran a business, I would pass it immediately because I believe probably about 75 to 80% of our problems would just disappear. And you do have that experience. Thank you so much for reminding us of that and, and the benefits that you're going to bring to our city.
Most definitely.
I appreciate you talking with me today.
Thank you.
Um, and so how can people find out more about your campaign?
I'm at hinofanola.com. I'm at hinofanola@gmail.com, uh, for, uh, email. I'm on Facebook. I'm on Instagram also. Hino Fanola is pretty much everything. You can find me at Hino Fanola.
Thanks, guys. See you next time.